The Beverly Hills Board of Education, October 24th regularly scheduled meeting. To kick things off, I would like to call up Evan Gillan and Mika Rahimi to lead us in our pledging festivities.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Values: excellent, integrity, wellness, inclusion, safety, community. Mission: educational excellence. Vision: Our students will realize their full potential to strive within integrity in the complex, challenging world.
Done, well done.
High five, dude.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. The document states therefore, "I pledge to model citizen behavior and respect in all communication and in the public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge difference of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and other accountable to this pledge, at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that we will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive."
Thank you, gentlemen, very well, well done. It actually means a lot more when it comes from the mouths of children than our big mouths. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Stern.
It was Mary.
Sorry, Mrs. Wells, pardon. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Breckie, report of closed session action, sir.
Thank you, President Margot. Just one item to report from closed session this evening. The board has voted five to zero to approve the settlement for OAH case 2023070028.
Thank you very much, and I will turn it right back over to you for our teacher spotlight.
So, we're very excited and thank you so much. It's a great vibe and energy in here tonight. Thank you for everybody for coming. I'm going to turn over our recognition to our principal of Hawthorne, Ms. Sarah Kaber, and our PBS celebration.
Good evening, Dr. Breckie and Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us. We have a little presentation for you. Share. Maybe it will be big in a second. There we go. So, we want to share with you our PBIS Silver Celebration. If you haven't already gotten some awesome beads, please just like raise your hand. We have some friends that are going to pass them out to you. So, I want to start with a thank you. So, those of you that don't know, I've been the principal for six years, which means that I was the principal at a middle school at Hawthorne when it was a K-8 school and an assistant principal there also. And I can remember a time when we were sitting around trying to figure out how to have some continuity between classes. How do we figure out what are the rules in one person's class going from middle school to the next period, right? We went from third period to fourth period, and it was a totally different set of rules. I can even remember far back when I was a teacher at Horseman, many, many years ago, thinking about like, how do we get some consistency around things like hall passes? Or how do we know what we're doing when we're answering the phones? What are the same words that we're using? And we knew that we needed something, and we didn't know what it was called, and we didn't know what we needed, but we could feel that there was something missing, and it turns out that that missing piece is PBIS. So, I really want to thank Laura Collins Williams and Student Services. I really want to thank you, Board of Education, and Dr. Breckie for bringing this even just into our ether and knowing what this is. It is really the path that we now rely on to keep our school together as one unified place. And so, that's how we're going to start, is thank you. It's not possible without you. And because of that, we have our Silver Award for you. So, maybe President Margot, this goes to you. This is not work that happens in one year. This has been happening since 2019, and the people listed here are people that have been on our team and off of our team to really have this vision and share this vision for our whole school. So, I'm going to just read their names real quickly. Jocelyn Bresnik, Kim Timmerman, Alisa Bosin, Krista Gunheinz, Elizabeth Smith, Ellen Polczak, Gray Anderson, Jamie Weddle, Kim Cheng, LaCicia Castaneda, Lisa Palmigiano, Tanya Guerra, Trisha Fagan, and then parents that have volunteered their time over and over and over again. Devora Wolf, Kelly Cooper, Lucy Davenport, Nadine Suss, Pablo Mejia, and Rachael Lavi. Really, our whole team comes together. So, just a real quick round of applause for them. And you might want to ask, how did we earn a Silver Award? Like, what does this mean? Where is that? And you should know that Silver is in a range of four. It's a clearly bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. So, we have to earn more than 90% on our Tier One implementation. So, just to explain where we are, feels like we've been talking about PBS for a long time. It feels like probably you've approved many, many contracts and much money, Board of Education, to go to this. Why is it so long? So, this shares with you both, Laco Los Angeles County Office of Education. What does it look like? So, the first two slides are all the things that we need to do on Tier One. There's two years of Tier One implementation, and we have met all of these little tiny dots at a 90% or higher level. And we want you to know that we're now on Tier Two, Year Two, and we still have Tier Three to go. So, if you have a sense of like, this is a path that we travel for a very long time. So, what do those little tiny dots mean? They mean best. So, I want to invite up Jocelyn Bresnik, who's been our site coach chair of PBIS for a long time. And in a second, I'll bring up their co-chair, Kim Timmerman.
So, just kind of looking at the screen, you're seeing a lot of blue and a lot of yellow, right? Because that we're Hawthorne, blue and gold. And one of the things that is a big component of Tier One is this common language and this common kind of set of visuals and expectations that are plastered everywhere, in every classroom, in the hallways, in common shared spaces all over the school. So, that's a big piece of what Tier One is really about, and we've worked for many years to make sure that Tier One was really visible and accessible to students and staff. Literally, everybody that's on our campus has seen some sort of affiliation with Hero. You probably see stickers and cards. Most notably, the kids are very excited about those, which we'll talk about in a second. And one of the things, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, it says hallways and stairwells lessons. So, that's one of the things that we've worked really hard to do, is to create and provide lessons for teachers to use in every single classroom TK through five, to make sure that this common language is being utilized and taught with every single student on campus. So...
Sorry, I just want to add something. So, when we go to turn in our awards, we don't get to just say and self-select that we do this. We have to actually put in all of our artifacts. So, we pulled some of the artifacts together that we had to show in order to get that award. So, that's just a sample of that long list of bullet points that you might have seen.
Yes, yes. So, just so you can kind of see what it looks like, this is happening all day, every day. People passing out stickers. You'll see Hero all over the walls in classrooms. We have our Hero Awards that happen every couple of months. And just to kind of get a sense of what it looks like, every teacher has kind of their own way of infusing Hero into their classroom and their everyday expectations and everyday management. And you can see that in these pictures here. And then also, these make me very excited, the Gilman Brothers, who are in the front row. Gilman Brothers, raise your hand. Evan, Eric, raise your hand. So, I'm actually going to have them tell you what these are, because this is like a big deal. And one of them started this collection in kindergarten, when Evan was in kindergarten. So, Evan, can you tell us a really quick explanation? Come on up, bud. And Eric, come on up. Brothers Gilman.
So, ever since I was in kindergarten, I would always hang a paper and put the stickers on the paper and then write it, the number of how many I have down. And I also used to do it for like those other stickers that weren't Hawthorne Hero stickers. And I would just put them on random pieces of paper, but then I wanted to just put a piece of paper and put them in order, but I couldn't count them because they were already like stacked up and moss put it up, so I wasn't able to count them.
And how many stickers do you have?
I have 114.
114.
Eric has 28 because it's only day 50 of school.
Do you want to say something about your collection, Eric? Did you want to say anything? No, he did it for you. Okay, okay, perfect.
And I also have a Hawthorne Hero card on the wall that has 74 and 75, but on 75, you can't really see it because I wrote it in pencil, and it's hard to see.
Yeah, yeah. So, you can see that these are really meaningful for kids, that, I mean, he has been collecting them since kindergarten, and you're in what grade now?
Second grade.
He's in second grade, and he's still collecting them, and they mean a lot to the kids. When the kids go home wearing those stickers, it's an engagement piece with the parents as well, to be like, how did you earn that sticker? And that's something that we work on, is, you know, having parents kind of understand what the stickers represent, how kids can earn those stickers, and then engage, and then engage in a conversation about how they earned that sticker. And then it provides a lot of amazing opportunities for conversations with kids about what they're learning in school and what they're doing in school, and what those stickers are attached to, and what those behaviors that they demonstrated were attached to. Before I do that, I have some really cute kids that really want to share with you their favorite parts of being a Hero. So, kids, come on up. Come on up. They're very excited. All right, so we're going to go with Mika first. This is Mika. Can you tell us what grade you're in?
I'm in fourth grade.
All right, go. Okay, go ahead, and can you explain what Hero is, Mika?
So, Hero is this thing that we have at Hawthorne that it represents four words that we use all over the school: honorable, engaged, responsible, and open-minded.
You did it. That was great. Do you want to tell us what you wrote down?
Yeah, sure. We can get, we can get Hero cards in school by being honorable, engaged, responsible, or open-minded. For example, you can get Hero cards for cleaning up at lunch, showing good sportsmanship, and being engaged in class.
Thank you, Mika. Louis, come on up. We're going to go oldest, oldest to youngest. Come on up, Lou. So, this is Louis. Louis, can you tell us what grade you're in?
I'm in third grade.
Okay, and can you tell us your favorite thing about Hawthorne Hero? What you love about being a Hawthorne Hero?
Well, my favorite thing about being a Hawthorne Hero is that it's just like a thing for our school. It's just like our thing. It's unique.
It's unique, yeah. Do you think you are a Hawthorne Hero?
Yes.
Yes, I know. I know he is. I can back that. Thank you, Louis. Did you want to say anything else about it? Okay, all right, you did it. Thank you, Louis. Okay, thank you, Louis. Go ahead, Jo.
Heroes?
What's your name and how old and what grade are you in?
My name is Jolene, and I'm six years old, and I'm in first grade. And talking about heroes, it like, it's like kind of open-minded, which is, open-minded means like, you really, really, really like try new things and, and like try new food and stuff like that.
That's right. That's part of it. Awesome, Jo. Thank you, Jo. Okay, Kat, and then you'll go. Let Kat go. Okay, okay, tell us your name and how old you are.
My name is Kat, but you can call me, but, and my real name is Catherine, but you can call me Kat.
And what grade are you in?
I'm in first grade.
And what do you like about being a Hawthorne Hero?
Well, I like, I usually like being open-minded and persevering.
That's good. Okay, cool. Thank you, Kat. Thank you, Kat. Okay, Evan, and then Eric.
My name is Evan, and I'm in second grade, and my favorite part about Heroes, Hero is responsible and open-minded, because when you're responsible, you can do everything yourself, and when you're open-minded, the first time you do it, it seems scary, but after you do it, you want to keep on doing it. Even when your time is up, you still want to do it.
That's right. Thank you, Evan. Awesome job. All right, Eric, you're up. Open-minded or engaged? Okay, can you say your name?
My name is Eric.
And I'm in kindergarten? And my favorite part about being a Hero is?
Engaged.
Why is being engaged your favorite part about being a Hero?
Because when you engage, you can do more fun stuff, but when you're not engaged, you miss out on the fun stuff.
That's true. That's accurate. So, that, that was not coached. That was literally just a prompting of what your relationship is to Hero. What do you feel, like, how is it connected to you? How is it meaningful to you? So, that was all that we asked them to do, was to think about how Hero was connected to them and what it meant and what their favorite, what translates, and what their favorite part about being a Hero is. So, they were very excited to share that with you. They're very proud of being Hawthorne Heroes. So, kids, thank you for being here. Thank you so much. Awesome job. All right. All right, and I'm going to bring up Ms. Timmerman, my co-pilot.
Well, this is the very unglamorous side of PBIS that I get to talk about. PBIS is very much into data, and as boring as that is, it's really, really important for running our program. So, we have a system through ARES that we, where we collect data, sort of infractions, things that teachers are worried about, that go into our ARES system, and we share that data with our staff. We share that with the PBIS team. We use that data to drive our program, to make sure that no child is left behind or, you know, forgotten about, that we're catching all of the kids that we need to catch to make sure they have the support that they need. So, that's one of the systems, the huge data systems we use. We also have really important documents on what behaviors are managed in the classroom and what behaviors are sent to the office, so that it's not a free-for-all. We have a very organized system of how kids are, how, for infractions that the teacher would handle, and then what infractions or behavior issues are then sent to the office. And those are the other two documents. And a lot of our success for the Silver Award is based on our data, that we are such awesome data collectors. So, that's our data, yeah.
So, one of the things that we talked about was that, when we found out that we won a Silver Award, was that it didn't take just our PBIS team, although those people really are committed to spending their time about thinking and planning things out for us, but really, it took everyone. It takes 100% of the people, 100% of the time to make sure that we're implementing this. And so, with the help and support of Student Services and our PBIS team, and then our ILT team, we made a decision that we would celebrate, and we had a big celebration on October 4th. And I just wanted to share that this is sort of what went out to the community, and this is some of the photos from that day. Everyone got some silver, all 615 of our students got silver necklaces. We wore them, and we celebrated with big silver Hero balloons and did some cheers, and we were celebrating with all sorts of kids and community members and parents. We also have lapel pins for you. Guys, do you have the lapel pins? Oh, sorry. Mr. Painter, they're in my bag. All my props. You can give them to Eric. He'll pass them out. And we made sure that we got them for all of our staff, all of the 100 people that work at Hawthorne, that everyone had, had access to that, and we're hoping to actually add it to our email signature, because it's part of what we earned and what we did completely as part of who we are, and we need to be proud of that work. And so, then I just want to end with this piece, which is that we did not share everything that we've worked on, because we really only had focused on what got us to a Silver, and we're hoping that we can get a Gold Award this year with the extra work that we've done. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for being part of that. Thank you for wearing your lapel pin. And that's it. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Kaber. Colleagues, do you have any quick comments for this wonderful group of children and teachers?
Sorry. Everybody just needs one, everybody just needs one. Yeah.
Are you kidding? We're going to sell these to Horseman.
Whoa. I think they say Hawthorne. Serious threats.
I got two.
First of all, just thank you to everyone, all our students and staff for coming here today and presenting and giving me my beads and my lapel pin. I'm very excited about this one. And to our PBIS staff, of course, for implementing this program and helping our kids succeed and thrive in such an amazing and productive way.
Well, congratulations to all of you Heroes. I'm so happy to have you here today at our board meeting. It's exactly what we needed to see today. It's very inspiring to have all of our Hawthorne Heroes here. I really want to congratulate you on getting to this level with the PBIS program. I know it's still fairly new, and that, you know, it, it takes time for people to buy into programs like this, but I do believe that if we don't set expectations and we don't define what it is that we want, we'll never get there. And I really believe that that's what the PBIS program strives to do. It really establishes and defines what, what behaviors and what we really want to strive for, and we can see it through the kids today, how they're starting to really internalize what those different characteristics are that we really want to value in our schools. But it, it doesn't happen without all of your commitment to make it happen. So, I'm really looking forward to see the, the program continue to grow, and I really want to thank you for your commitment. And congratulations again to all of our awesome Hawthorne Heroes for coming to our board meeting today and winning your award. Thank you.
Ms. Matt Cherry?
Thank you. Just want to thank everyone for taking the time to come out and join us. I love it when it's a full house, when you're all here with the kids and the opinions. It's something that I welcome, and I'm, I'm so glad to see you all here. The PBIS is especially special because, to me, because I'm seeing some of the parents out there that I grew up with and some of the babies... out there that I grew up with, and some of the babies that I remember seeing in mom's bellies, um, when we were in, even our preschool days. And so to our admin and our staff that's really establishing this as our community standards for how we treat ourselves and how we treat one another, um, you know, the apple does not fall far from the tree. Uh, and so I'm so grateful for the parents and their kids for, you know, adopting the program, being leaders within our community, and really elevating all of our experience. Thank you.
Nothing further to add. I'm just very happy, and I'm so glad to have you guys as role models for our students and our school. So thank you.
Thank you. And for, if wasn't explained, for those at home that see us with these silver necklaces, or it's not real silver, but this is in honor of their Silver Award. That's why we're all wearing these tonight. Um, thank you, Mrs. Kaber and Ms. Presnick and Ms. Timmerman and children for joining. I think, Evan, I think you wanna take over for me tonight? I'm just gonna, I think you got, because it sounds like you got this. So, I was very impressed.
I know I'm in a new seat, but I thought maybe I could add a word.
I, I was going to you next.
Thank you. Well, I, I just wanted to add one word that I sit here and I beaming so proudly at all of you, because you just make me so proud. And I have to say to the whole school and the community that made this part, it takes a village. And you couldn't have done it without all of you working together. And this shows it right here and now, that you have accomplished something that we hoped would happen, and you made it happen. So I wanna thank you for all your hard work. I wanna congratulate you little guys. I love your shoes. They're great looking. Can I get a pair of those shoes? Yeah, I love your tennis shoes. I hope I didn't embarrass you. Anyway, thank you again for being, what a great presentation.
I also wanna just say congratulations. Uh, what a great victory for our school district, uh, to hit Silver. Um, I also wanna, and you heard it best tonight, we, we talk a lot about PBIS. You hear it all the time. But I think what you heard from our students today is really kind of where we're going. And that is, that this is a very intrinsic kind of thing. Like, it's, you hear us say PBIS, you hear us talk about the data, but what this really is, is this, this opportunity, this is a cultural thing. This is why we do what we do. So you heard students talk about, you know, that's, that's what we do at Hawthorne. You know, that, that's not what we do at Hawthorne, you know? And that, to me, is really the, the capstone of the entire program, is that when we can start to talk about, like, what we do here, and how we shine here, and what, what we don't do, it, that's the best way to send the message about who we are as a school district and also a school. And, and that's exciting to see. And this is the first time I've ever been able to see that, and even with our youngest learner. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We are gonna let them go. Thank you. Thank you for the pins and the necklaces.
Good job. Good to see you. Good to see you.
Thank you. Guys are all obsessing over the shoes.
Yeah. Jordan's.
I can't see this.
The co- can I continue? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move. Thank you, everybody. Um, that's always the favorite part of the meetings for at least us up here, and I'm sure for everybody out there, because everything else, after that, just goes downhill, right? It's kids, and then policies, oh my God. No offense, Dustin. Moving on to our agenda, hearing period, public comment. Um, we'll start with Daphna Hollander, who has seated time, so she has six minutes. Are you running the clock? Thank you so much.
I'm Daphna Hollander. So as most parents, us parents, the most important element we ask of the school district, beyond the academics or athletics or even after-school programs, is that our children are provided with a safe environment. And sadly, I'm here to tell you that this is no longer true. I have witnessed or heard about a growing number of events that led me to believe that we have a pattern of antisemitism that is being ignored. Last week, my daughter and her friends were told by a substitute teacher that they were, quote, "white supremacist." And what prompted the teacher to call them names and label them with such vile hate speech? After the lesson was over, a small group of students were having a quiet conversation about the current situation in Israel, and the teacher interjected herself into the discussion to immediately tell them, "The people of Israel are colonizers, and that Israel is an apartheid state." Even if a teacher is trying to provide a different perspective, these are damaging words and reflect a specific end of the spectrum of any argument. She also told them not to speak about something about which they are not educated. Now, our, our daughter spent last summer on a leadership program in Israel, where she traveled from Gaza to the Galan Heights. She has had in-depth conversations with both Israelis and Palestinians in the region. On this topic, she is more educated than most, and certainly more educated than this teacher who should learn to follow her own advice. When the students challenged the teacher's opinions with facts, her only response was to tell them that they were white supremacist, just like the Jews she grew up with. And this was said in a voice that people in all corners of the room could hear. We know this because kids rushed after class to check on my daughter. These words were not only unprovoked, entirely unjustified, they were damaging, hurtful, and threatening. The teacher is essentially calling all Jews white supremacist. That much is clear. This type of hatred should not be explained away or excused. It is pure hatred, pure and simple. Today, we should all be aware that labels such as white supremacist can elicit violent reactions from others. And this was not in a discussion of equals, but rather in a position of power calling hate, uh, children hateful names. To say the least, we have been disappointed by the response of the district. But we have also been disappointed by so many other positions the district has taken over the last few weeks against Jewish students. From not being allowed to hold a quiet ceremony honoring specifically the Jewish victims, or write letters specifically to IDFs. History has taught us that antisemitism does not begin overtly. It begins in subtle ways. We initially gave the district a pass when they seemed to forget Holocaust Remembrance Day. But I have now heard of countless antisemitic incidents at high school and mostly the middle school that are being swept under the rug because people are afraid to speak up. I am now speaking out on behalf of all those victims, and I encourage them to speak, to speak up. Encourage them to come forward. I want the board to be aware of these events are happening at a growing frequency and are being handled by individuals who may not fully understand the issues or be equipped to properly serve the community they represent. And these matters, they're really serious, and I don't think taking an expensive, like, three-hour sensitivity training session is the answer. I wanna share with you in very clear terms. The Jewish students do not feel safe or supported in this district. As, and we as parents want to remind the administration that no action is an action, and attempting to be neutral in many situations actually does mean choosing a side. We will, we will be watching carefully in the days, weeks, and months to come, if the district is willing to create a safe environment for all students, and not just the ones that they think fit a particular narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is Ayala Anavim? Um, she's six. She has seated time. If I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. I earned the Silver.
Good evening. I am a concerned parent of Beverly Hills High School, and I come before you today to address an urgent matter. Last week, my daughter and a group of students were discussing in a civil way the ongoing conflict involving the brutal, satanic, and barbaric attacks by Hamas on Israel. However, what should have been a productive exchange turned into something deeply concerning. This conversation was interrupted by a substitute teacher who is hired regularly across all our schools, making outrageous accusations against the students who were defending Israel. She labeled these students as white supremacist. White supremacist. She also told them to get educated on that matter, then gave them false statements, such as Israel is committing genocide, and that life's expectancy of a Palestinian is 18. In addition, the teacher stated that her Jewish friends have never invited her over to their homes, insinuating Jews are racist. It is clear that this teacher has a strong opinion on the Jewish people, and that is her right. But somebody with so much hate should not be teaching in a school district where many of the students are Jewish. In fact, she should not be teaching at all. In a time where many Jewish students are afraid to go to school, our teachers need to be a voice of comfort and reason, and not add fuel to the fire on a tragedy that involves the murder, beheading, torture, rape, and kidnapping of innocent babies, children, women, and elderly. The teacher's role is to create a safe environment for open conversation, opposed to instilling fear and personal vendettas on our children. As parents, it is our responsibility to ensure the sanctity of our children's education, as well as their emotional well-being. I am so proud of my daughter for reporting this unacceptable behavior, and together we need to work towards sending a strong message that this teaching approach has consequences. We need to ensure an educational space that truly nurtures our children's intellectual growth and encourages respectful dialogue, rather than impose the faculty's opinion on our children. There is no room for racism and antisemitism in our classrooms, and this situation is a huge teachable moment for our children. It is scary to think that this teacher also teaches younger, more impressionable students, because not all students may have the same courage to speak up to such threatening remarks as my daughter did. Since this incident, response from school has been unsatisfactory, to say the least. Our community must unite to hold those in position of authority accountable for their words and actions. No child should go to school in fear of getting assaulted, physically or verbally, as my daughter has. Never again is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Labib?
Hi there. Thank you all for all that you do for our children. Um, I'm a third-time parent here at the high school, and I feel very blessed to be here. I really hadn't prepared anything, but just as I'm sitting here, I did have some thoughts that I'd like to share. The safety of our children is of utmost importance, and I just wanna bring some attention to some of the events and occurrences throughout the world, and in particular in Israel, um, and some of the fears that have been instilled in our children, and to be aware of the psychological situations that they've been dealing with, and especially many of the children who do feel very connected to Israel and to the events that have happened. Um, so I, I have recently asked my high schooler that if he is anywhere, and if anyone asks him if he's Jewish, if he doesn't need to, to just say, "I'm not," or to even say, "I don't really follow politics. I don't really know. I'm really not aware." And, um, as, as an immigrant who came to this country for religious persecution, and who, I have lived most of my life feeling prideful and telling my children that they are so lucky they live in a place where they can be comfortable and free with their religion, and to, um, be free to express their religion, I, I'm very concerned for the situations that are occurring right now. My biggest, um, concern that I wanted to bring to you is to be aware of the psychology and the emotional level that they're dealing with, and to know that as parents, many of us are telling them at home in the evenings when they're out, to be careful with such situations that may occur, whether it's Uber rides, or being in the streets, and being close to, um, rallies. Um, I, I do differentiate those situations with being in school. I tell my children and my son that when you're in school, you're in a safe place. You should have the ability to be safe and to go to your supervisors, your teachers, and to bring to them, to their attention if there is something going on. So the incident that happened last week, my son was in that classroom. I was not aware of the full details until Daphna just explained them to me before the meeting, and hearing her express all of these details. Um, my concern is that our children not live in fear, and that they can come to someone who is there, even though school is a place to, you know, where everyone can have different religious values systems, different beliefs, to feel protected. And I, I have differentiated that fear that I have outside of the school to giving them empowerment and a time where they can express their thoughts, their values, and even their fears. Um, so I just ask that maybe as the school and as the board members, please be, um, sensitive to some of the situations that they're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bella Ivory?
Hi, everyone. Um, good evening, esteemed board members. Um, I would like to move to bring to the board's attention that, um, the unfair salary schedule and biased contractual agreement that I was presented with and asked to sign on August 9th, um, of this year. The contract that I was asked to sign isn't the standard BHEA contract that all teachers are asked to sign. It doesn't take my previous years of teaching here at the school into consideration. And actually, I was told that I would lose those three, those, um, previous years of teaching here at Beverly Hills High School, and also at the Torrance, um, school district. Prior to my employment with Beverly Hills USD, I taught and continue to, to be, to be a faculty member at FIDM, the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising. I was hired as a faculty fashion design instructor at FIDM, um, in November 2019, which I'm still a faculty member there. Um, last year, BHEA and, um, Beverly Hills Unified School District decided to move me and another CTE teacher into the BHEA salary schedule, making us, um, union members. As a result of the BHEA and Beverly Hills Unified District's prior- In my role, I have greatly expanded the program that I wrote, the ELOs and SLOs for. Also, I have also written the curriculum for the fashion design program. I've been a fourth, fifth teacher here at Beverly Hills High School since the 2021-22 school year, and I have sacrificed much doing, doing that along with dedicating myself to the growth of the program. The students adore me and their parents are very supportive of my program. Not to mention, I love my students, and they know this. I love my students very much and have the utmost respect for their parents. The decision to present my issues to the board members is a result of a suggestion made to me by LACOE, which is the Los Angeles County Board of Education. Not being able to rectify issues within a biased contractual agreement, lost wages, thank you guys so much, but I do have documentation if you guys would like it.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda hearing period. Thank you, speakers. We're going to move into the consent calendar. Anybody pulling from consent? Going once, going twice? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I will second the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus in reverse. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Dr. Bregge, I'm sorry, Ms. Lifson?
Okay. Okay. So this is going to be covering the past two weeks, and let's just jump in. So going in order of events here, two weeks ago now, the high school had its homecoming, the game, the rally, and the following dance, all which were a, I think, pretty impressive success considering the sort of dour state of events at the time especially. So I think this was a great opportunity for our students to come together and have some fun amidst a lot of recent tragedy, so there was that. Next up in our athletic section, we have a lot of our sports, our fall sports right now, either heading into league finals and playoffs or, as we see here, celebrating our senior night. So this was from last Friday, our football team, cheer team and band all had their senior nights at our last home football game of the season, which was just a great opportunity for all our seniors to be honored and recognized amongst their peers, and we got treated to some really amazing performances from cheer, band, and obviously the football game itself. Next up for events at the high school, we have, on the left here, a picture from the Great Shakeout Drill we had, I believe, last week now, which we were talking about in student government, about how it was a great learning opportunity, I think, for student leadership and admin alike to highlight some of the organizational areas of improvement that we could focus on going into the coming year. And then on the right here from the same day, we have our first newly annual senior, SoCA senior event, sorry, where all students at the high school got the opportunity to dump a bucket of water or ice water on select members of the senior class from the football and cheer teams. This was a great fundraiser event that we look forward to renewing and maybe bringing some staff members into in the coming months. So, yeah. A couple of weeks ago, we had the BH Run of the Stars, an amazing community event. I was so pleased to attend myself with obviously participation in large amounts from the cross-country team as well as the running club and just students, parents, and community members in general around the Beverly Vista campus, and this was a great event. Then here we have from this past weekend, some highlights from the BH Art Show, where and here we have some select artwork done by students at the high school from AP Photography and AP 2D Art and Graphic Design classes, which was a great opportunity for students and the community to not only seek community art from international artists but also from right here at the high school itself, and a great opportunity for our student artists to get their work showcased on a slightly bigger scale than normal. And then here I wanted to include a sort of campus spotlight. These are photos from some of the events that our high school, Israel, and Jewish Clubs have put on the past couple of weeks, including a Wearing Blue and White Day to show support for the victims of the attacks in Israel, as well as a event where students had the opportunity and staff members had the opportunity to write letters of support to IDF soldiers, which went over really great, and I want to thank specifically Odelia Shofa and Asher Adut for putting on these events and all the members of our Jewish and Israel Clubs for putting on these events. They were great moments of support for the community and went over really well with And then lastly, upcoming events, I wanted to highlight the upcoming Horseman Chili Cook-Off happening November 4th, an event I did not realize was annual, but I'm very excited and looking forward to attending, as well as the Halloween and multicultural continuum events we have at the middle school. And that about wraps it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sophia. Turn that over to Dr. Bregge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Margot. I do have a couple of repeats, so it's nice to know that these events are well-attended and recognized by us. I want to just start off by talking about something that we've been talking about in our strategic plan, and that is some of the data, the discipline, looking at more transparency in our school district. And so we're going to be sharing some information. Parents have reached out and they've said often that, "Let us know what's going on, and we want to be helpful." So with the wider community but also with our PTAs, and I have the great opportunity once a month to meet with our PTA presidents, this is a production that's based on a lot of those conversations. And so one of the things that we had talked about from our parent community and the committee that we put together is that data piece and to make sure that that's right. And so we're spending a lot of time ensuring that as a school district, we're collecting that data the same way. You heard it a little bit earlier when staff members were talking about PBIS, and it's really important to get that data correct, and so that we're collecting it the right way, that we're recognizing it the right way, and that, most importantly, that we're sharing that the right way. So this is something that you can expect in the next couple of weeks as we shore up our data, and want to thank Ms. Collins-Williams. We've been attending at each school site with the administration, some meetings so that we can share and look at the discipline, we can look at that data, and most importantly, and how we can share that so that we can set targets for improvement. I'll go through some of these quickly since they're repeats, but homecoming and a win at homecoming and just the vibe in the air and the number of people that attended make this to be one of the most exciting nights of the entire year. It's a very exciting time for all of us, and it was nice to see that our students took every moment to enjoy that as well. The week before last, we had hosted along with J.J. Duncan and Stacy Book with Not Today Cancer. This was a race that we had in honor of Mason. What a great event this was. It was moved from Roxbury to Beverly Vista Middle School, and we were just so proud to be able to host this event. I think it was a really appropriate place to host the event, seeing as though Mason would have been in the eighth grade this year. So this was a very special occasion for us, and want to thank not only J.J. and Stacy but Mr. Ellis as well for all of the details that put this together and made this a safe event. As you know, we've talked about offering PSAT and the MSQT for our 11th graders. We had over 200 students, 239 students that showed up to take that exam, and then also for our ninth graders, the PSAT 8-9, and we had over 250 students show up. This just seems to get better. This is a well-oiled machine, and this is incredible data and practice for our students. You just can't beat it. As Ms. Lifson talked about with the Great Shakeout, this was the most comprehensive Great Shakeout that we've ever done, and so I want to thank Mr. Mead for that, the work of our principals, and the connection that we have with our city. This is a real event that could happen at any time, and every second counts, and there are a lot of procedures that you don't get to see behind the scenes, a lot of the communication, a lot of the protocols, the what if this happens and what if that happens and where do I go? And this gave us a really great opportunity to start looking at the reunification areas that's oftentimes an area that's left out of our safety plans, and certainly not ours here, but we have our safety plans, we put them to use, but it's that piece where you are coming to pick up your child is often kind of left out because we deal that when that happens. We ensured that we were going to do that and put that into place, and we actually had parents, and I want to thank the community and the parents that actually showed up to be in that role, to what would I go to pick up my child? And it was just going through an event, you have to go through it from the very beginning to the very end, and I just want to thank Mr. Mead for dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's. This was extremely comprehensive, and not only for an earthquake but for any type of emergency, and so I want to thank you for that. We work very closely, as you know, with the city of Beverly Hills, and they, as we share information back and forth, they're asking us to help them in their message about safety and about prohibiting some items that get students and our kids into trouble, and that is anything but like silly string, hair removal products, shaving cream, and so we're working with them to see what we can do to share that information with you, to help us to keep those things out of the hands of our kids for a 24-hour period. Walden is a very interesting place on Halloween, and so there's a lot of work that the police puts in, a lot of our efforts. And, you know, we've talked a lot about safety tonight, I'm going to bring it up in just a second, but I just want you to look at it from this perspective, because you may look at this and think, "This is really silly stuff, and this is, you know, can't believe that we're talking about this." But at a time where, you know, we are in heightened alert for safety, the less resources that the city can use to be in areas like this, controlling that mob activity on the night of Halloween is something certainly that I know our city would really, really appreciate so that we can use our resources for safety in the best areas. Unity Day, thank you to Ms. Collins-Williams, Student Services, for another day where we're able to recognize and unite together against bullying, and so that is that slide and us coming together in those T-shirts. Last week, we had two events that occurred at Horseman. One is a mural unveiling. Want to thank BHF, also the Horseman PTA. There were so many kids that were involved. If you look at the center, this is completely created by our students with varying grade levels, and this was a real unveiling. So we were all there, and students had not seen the completed work, but it was really exciting to be able to see. The first thing that kids did was point to their parents and to point out to them that "This is what I did," and even if it was the smallest area. So I also want to thank, this was under the direction of Ms. Tiffany Graham, who is incredible art teacher at Horseman, and she was behind the vision and the building of this program that started in a summer program, and it was great to see everybody. We were able to go from this event into our elementary math night, and want to thank our high school students for actually hosting the tables. Students, it was packed. I mean, I cannot believe the attendance. It was really high, and I'm going to use the word that I think it was Evan Gillan that said this, but the engaged, the students were so engaged. So, you know, it was students from Horseman and from Hawthorne coming together, and I want to thank staff for coming out. Want to especially thank Maggie Mayberry from Student Services for all of her efforts to put this together. It was really an exciting night, and you could barely walk. That's how highly attended it was. This is an event that gets better every year at Hawthorne, and that is their Fall Harvest Festival. It is an incredible, fun experience. This year, they reconfigured a lot of the activity, and just want to thank everybody for working so hard for this event, just always a highlight of the year. Quickly, just want to just kind of reiterate what Ms. Lifson said about the Beverly Hills Art Show. You know, we keep doing more with the city, and I hope that people start seeing that. This is an art show that I've been going to for years since I was a kid. This is highly attended, it's an international audience, and for us to even get a booth there to show off our student artwork is no small feat to get that done, so thank you to Ms. Starkins, Ms. Jen Pedersen for spending a lot of her time, energy, manning this booth and getting people to come to it, but what an incredible event with an audience that had, many had not even thought about Beverly Hills Unified until they were able to see this booth. So I want to say thank you for that first opportunity that we had, and hopefully years to come. Kind of leading up to this event, we talked a lot about BHF and the poker night at Fred Fairbarn's house. Again, to see the people that come out and support our events is really humbling. It is just another opportunity where parents and staff really came out for this event for a very good cause, is a great fundraiser for BHF. But what was really great about this night was people talking about how wonderful it is that people could talk to each other, they could see each other in a time where we really need to come together as a community, and I think I learned more this night about Jewish education, Jewish history, and our community at this event than any other event that I've attended in the last eight years here. So I value that opportunity very much. As you know, we're very proud of our Bulldog Aid Center, which is aligned to our Norman Aid Center, and so I welcome you to a grand opening that we're going to have. It's been a long time coming and in the making. That'll be November 8th at 8:00 a.m., and we're super excited to be able to kick this evening off with an official grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony, so I hope to see you all there.
Does it start at 8:00 a.m.?
Yes, starts at 8 o'clock on the 8th. I'll send that to the board as a reminder as well. So you've seen, we've put this out. I just want you to know that we have an incredible relationship with our police department. You've heard me say it before, more now than ever before. I mean, it's not just talking about silly string and things not to bring for Halloween. It's every day, it's ongoing, and it's between our school site leadership, our district leadership, and also the police department here in Beverly Hills. We're just so honored and grateful to have this relationship. I'm in speed dial for Chief Stainbrook, and he uses it when he needs to get ahold of me. I want you to be really assured, this is not an announcement, this is not a PR move. This is real. It's every day, and it's ongoing, and we have a great relationship with our SROs as well, but I'm sure you've seen the increased presence. There are things that you don't see as well, unmarked cars and detectives, it's all happening. And so this isn't a promo. excited to be able to kick this evening off with a official grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony. So I hope to see you all there.
Did you say 8:00 AM?
Yes, starts at 8 o'clock on the 8th. I'll send that to the board as a reminder as well. So you've seen, we've put this out. I just want you to know that we have an incredible relationship with our police department. You've heard me say it before, more now than ever before. I mean, it's not just talking about silly string and things not to bring for Halloween. It's every day, it's ongoing, and it's between our school site leadership, our district leadership, and also the police department here in Beverly Hills. We're just so honored and grateful to have this relationship. I'm in speed dial for Chief Stainbrook and he uses it when he needs to get ahold of me. I want you to be really assured, this is not an announcement. This is not a PR move. This is real. It's every day and it's ongoing. And we have a great relationship with our SROs as well. But I'm sure you've seen the increased presence. There are things that you don't see as well, unmarked cars and detectives. It's all happening. And so this isn't a promo for us. It's real. And I'm just want to be able to share with you confidently that this becomes the highest priority for our school district and for our students. You heard Ms. Lipton also talk about Odalia Shofit and Asher Dute. And I've had the opportunity with Mr. Stewart last week to work with them. This is a student-led unity vigil, but we are super happy to be there, to help plan with them. We're going to do the peripheral part, the security plan. And it's really exciting to be able to put this vigil together. They have asked for attendance from our school board, also from the city council. And so this is going to be on the 30th. So this is next Monday at 3:30. More details will be coming. But this is an opportunity, our students met with us and they said, we want to do a unity vigil. But not only do we want to do the unity vigil, but we want to take this time to honor the Israeli victims and from this terrorist attack. And so we are super happy to be able to work shoulder to shoulder with them. But they are leading it, they are running it, and we could not be any more proud to be there shoulder to shoulder. And finally, you know, one thing that really, when we look back at how we get our messages across, how we pull together as a community, it's through our town halls. And so we are planning, and I just want to give you some notice upfront that, you know, we want to be able to pull our community together during the best of times, but also the toughest of times. And so we want to lead with a framework where we have an opportunity as a community to discuss the positive things that are happening in our school district, but also to share ideas and suggestions. But also have that opportunity too where there are any concerns that are shared too. And we want to do that in a close-knit kind of environment, a place where we can all respect and listen to one another and grow. And so we are working on some speakers for this opportunity, but also to have that opportunity where just have time to talk. And to be honest, that's the part that I'm looking forward to the most is just to have that open dialogue with our community. And so I'll share more information with the board and with our community as this gets closer. But we are already working on this and we're excited to be able to provide this opportunity and hope that this becomes a format, because it's been successful in the past, that we can continue to do throughout the year. And that is my report, Mr. Margot.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Any comments quickly from my colleagues? I'll start this end now, Ms. Marcus.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Bregge. It was a very, very full two weeks that has been going on. And it's been nice to be able to catch up on it. And I would just like to say that the, I, sometimes you can't be in two places at one time. And some of the events make it impossible for you to be. And this coming Monday, though, I'm going to see how I can work out because I'm supposed to do the health and safety. And that's another issue that we're going to have to discuss because I really want to be able to be there for the kids because it means a lot. So I've got to work out something on that. We'll talk about it. And other than that, I want to thank you for that most comprehensive, so much going on, so much to be going on in the district. And I really thank you for the report.
You're welcome. Dr. Stern.
Dr. Bregge, thank you for the messages concerning the terrible situation that's going on and that our community is tangibly feeling at this point. On another note, I really enjoyed Math Night. And it was interesting, on my way to, driving down there, on my way to Math Night, I passed Kumon, math. And I decided to take pictures because to me, it was so evident just how far we've come as a district and as a group of really good educators to conceive of how we teach math and by association STEM and science, which are also related. And I just took a picture of these poor children after, it must have been 7 o'clock, who were sitting there at a computer with a few photocopies next to them. And I thought, I am grateful that I'm going to a school right now where nothing like this is going on. And I went in and sure enough, I see kids standing up, interacting, talking, using things in 3D, and working with their minds and creating and having alternative solutions and all the things we know is what makes math pedagogy robust and valuable. So it is no small thing that our school district is working to embrace math and to look at it differently than, say, Kumon. Because old school is to give a ton of photocopies and drill and kill. And I say to that franchise, shame on you, shame on you, because we talk about people who dread math, who have fear of math. And I'll tell you, if you want to continue that narrative and those sentiments, then continue doing drill and kill. And that is something we've moved away from as a district. I really, I've made no secret that I feel that we need to look more closely at some of our math scores, but we are definitely on the right path. And it starts with the motivation to give kids innovation and let them think in real time and in 3D and not a 2D flat worksheet. And I also want to say again that it is science and STEM that is also important because that is where math comes to life. And it's the language that is used with science. And so we also must address that and have a science night perhaps. Other than that, thank you for all that you shared.
Thank you, Ms. Menachery.
No comment other than thank you for the topics that you discussed, which I believe are what's on our families' minds. So thank you for sharing on that.
Mrs. Wells.
Thank you for your report. I'd like to also say how nice it is to see in the activities and the events that are happening, it's really the manifestation of the different things that we've talked about previously. So from having the Behavior Advisory Committee to actually meeting now at the schools, it's really wonderful to see that. Having the Math Night and really bringing the two elementary schools together and bringing the parents in and engaging the parents with the learning in that community environment, I think was really, it's such a success. And it's really nice to see this our second year. I also really loved seeing the art fair this year and the art show. I know it's a lot of work. So thank you, Rebecca, and to our PTA for all the work that that took. But I do think it is, again, it's so meaningful for our students to be, it's a benefit. They live in Beverly Hills and we had, is the 50th anniversary of that art show. And it's such great exposure and such a great opportunity for our young artists to be able to be on display in that way. So it seems small sometimes, but I think those things are really big and I think that they really make an impact. So I know it takes a lot of effort for all of these things and we're seeing them in action. So we talk a lot, but we're actually seeing action. So thank you. One last thing I just wanted to say. I'm so proud of our Jewish, our Beverly Hills High School Jewish Club and the Israel Club. I think I said this at our last meeting, but they really just jumped into action right away and set up a series of events and really have brought the community together, not just within our school community, but also reaching out beyond our school community and beyond. And they've been a great, great role models and great leaders in this area. And I'm really, really proud of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Ms. Lipton?
Just to briefly reiterate, sorry, I think that both you and Evan were correct in that engaged is absolutely the theme of what we've been doing recently as a district, both on an educational level and as a community. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Appreciate the words. Seeing all the photos, I'm staring at myself. And now I know why I'm so tired this week. It's an exhausting couple of weeks. Okay, moving on to business and finance.
I will make a motion to reject the application for the late claim relief for Claim Number 626889.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells.
Went somewhere else.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to planning and facilities.
I will make a motion for the acceptance of the completed interior demolition of the temporary housing work at Beverly Hills High School worked by the Garza Construction, filing of a notice of completion and the release of retention.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. Any questions for that one? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B. I'll make a motion for the acceptance of the completed temporary housing disconnect work at BHHS work by Secure Tech, filing of a notice of completion and release of retention.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Any questions on that one?
Just a comment, I would like to say that it was just, seemed like yesterday or the day before that we approved the going ahead with this. And now we're approving the completion of it. And I think that really speaks to the fact that we're moving along on some of the projects that need to get done. So this is really very, very promising to me that we're moving ahead quickly.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to 14C.
I will move for the approval of Deductive Change Order Number One for the Garza Construction for the Bulldog Aid Wellness Center at Beverly Vista Middle School.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. Any questions on that one? Thank you for the detailed transmittal staff on that one. I appreciate the explanation. Hearing nothing else. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item D, 14D.
Move for the approval of Founder Solari Incorporated's Amendment Number Two to the Existing Bond Program Management Contract.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. Any questions on that one?
Well, I thought maybe we could get just a brief explanation of how this is really not, it's more of a saving, as I recall. There was not supposed to be something that we should perhaps take note of if someone could say something. I think this was something that was due to hard work, we're coming out sort of ahead on this and saving some money, if I remember.
Yes, well, that's partially correct. This amendment doesn't really have any financial impact. What we did actually is just rearrange some of the projects that were modified based on our value engineering efforts. We kind of eliminated the project that was the retaining wall project and incorporated some of that work into our athletic fields projects and also Building C. So we were able to eliminate that line item. And then we added the grand lawn and we also added the upper athletic fields.
So we really are ahead of the, basically, because of the changes that you made, right?
Yeah. Well, I would say so, but yeah.
And how are the A numbers going to work as far as restructuring those projects?
The A numbers aren't really going to change. We didn't have an A number separately for the retaining wall project, but the grand lawn always had its own A number.
But did the South Side work have a separate A number?
South Side does have its own A number.
So you're combining it as far as budget, but there's still separate A numbers with the retaining wall on the South Side?
Yes, retaining wall and upper field will be a new one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I think when we were in the CBSC, we were talking about this. And Amin mentioned some of the savings that by doing some of this rearranging and with the, not doing the oil well and the retaining walls. And it was, I think he said 15 million for the oil, not to do the oil well. And since we won't have to do that and the retaining wall was, for some reason, I have 4 million there.
That's correct.
So just for those two items alone, it's $19 million. And that's part of what's allowing us to be able to do the upper fields, which we did not have in a budget at all, as well as to do the grand lawn. And just to tie back to the previous items on our agenda, where those trailers were is, now that they're gone, that is the area where the grand, I mean, where the fields, the upper fields will be. So we're not only making plans in that regard, they're moving those things out and we're moving forward. And I believe you also have an RFQ out for that right now as well?
That's correct. And we have a meeting tomorrow, pre-qualification meeting tomorrow for the upper fields. And the qualifications and proposals we do in the beginning or middle of November.
Right. So I just think it's really wonderful just to call out how, how much work you're getting done and how efficiently you are about doing it so that it's saving money and finding money in our budget to allow us to do much more work than we ever thought we could do. So thank you.
You're welcome. And just while I got you up there, how's it going with the seats at O'Redeau Auditorium?
It's going great. They're already there. They'll be installed probably very shortly.
Wonderful.
Yeah, they're on site.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Good news.
Substantial completion at the end of the year.
Thank you.
They'll be in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Karat. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, that department, facilities, I mean. Board Policies, 15A. These are first readings tonight, colleagues. At any point, if you decide to move, waive the first and go to a second, that is your prerogative. So in order to get the discussion going.
I have some comments on it.
Well, can we put the motion on the floor, please?
Okay, I move for the approval of the first reading of the updates to the Board Policy 6000 Series.
I'll second for purpose of discussion. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go back and start on that end quickly. Come back this way, keeping it all random tonight. So we'll go through and I guess we'll have just questions from the board. Dustin, if that works for you.
Sure.
Unless you had anything you wanted to talk about.
Nope.
All right. Ms. Lipton, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Mrs. Wells? Ms. Menachery?
I just wanted to confirm if possible that we'll be receiving a notebook with the printed materials. And then are we going to be engaging in the same kind of discussion that we had earlier today? Or what is our intended pathway on this?
The 6000s were just updates of something we had already approved. So these, it's, I think it's like a 20-page document.
Yep. So just a history, we did the 6000s about two summers ago. And then CSBA, every quarter, so four times a year, we receive the new, based off of new bills signed into law or ed code from the governor's office. And so these are the October updates for the few 6000s. So in total, we have three, there's eight that are just basically renewed up from the CSBA language. So they were already existing policies within our 6000s that were approved previously. And so there's just some edits to language. And then in new legislation and ed code, for the first time, this is a brand-new CSBA policy, which is the second item that I'm standing here. This first packet, however, is the CSBA recommendations for us to consider, for the school board to consider.
Can I also add, like typically, this is how updates would come throughout the year at different meetings. This is probably a little bit, you know, a few more than what we would usually get. But to get caught up with all of the policies, that's why we're doing the study sessions. But this is something that you'll see like throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. I did see, I did look through the 6000s and I could see that there were some, you know, minor updates, which I thought were great. I do have the five or six things that I want to either add or change. I think right now, maybe the best thing would be for me to just talk about the concepts that I wanted to add. And then more granularly, you know, you could add it or we could agree to. But, you know, looking at it and just regarding some of the things that have befallen us since the pandemic, there are some things that I think really are relevant. So for example, if we go to mental health, which is halfway down page four, one consideration for mental health is certainly the impact of social media. And I didn't see that there. But as, you know, since 2009 or the last update, we've certainly seen an increase in depression, anxiety, and eating disorders because of social media. So I want that in there. Another just more conceptual thing is that unfortunately, fentanyl and other lethal substances have found their way into other drugs, counterfeit drugs, foods, candies, drinks. And so one concept that should be in both the grades one through six, as well as the older grades, is having the prudence, however we want to say it, so that they are aware that you cannot merely just accept sources or candy that are merely just accept sources or candy that is unknown. And that should be something that is taught and in the curriculum.
There, around fentanyl and other drugs, there is some updates that are actually coming in the 5000s.
Oh.
So some of those things, just as a review, a lot of the student pertaining information such as social media and drug education and stuff would be within the student handbooks and procedures and policies. This pertains primarily to our four core subjects. You always want to kind of think through that lens of what is it being addressed within Science and Social Studies, English and Math, which is required by ed code.
Right. So I'm glad we have the required ed code things. But, you know, to the extent that we're being redundant and we say some of these things, they are, we say that in the 5000s, that's great. I just want it to be definitely addressed. So again, with the mental health, adding eating disorders, then there were some, there's some vernacular language that I think is probably more outdated, you know, like venereal disease, I think we now say sexually transmitted infection, just small things like that. Same thing, I guess. And I guess another issue that could come at some point is just, you know, bullying and being aware of that as a public health issue, you know, and it is, goes hand in hand with violence. Let's see. Anyway, so however those are incorporated, I think we all could agree that those would be, you know, great enhancements, but it sounds like we're on it. So that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Mrs. Marcus?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments going through it. I know that these, we went through these a couple of years ago, and these are just the upgrades of the SB, you know, school boards. But I think that on the courses of study, the regulation, I think we should really note that we are separated by grades one through five and seven, six through 12. And I think that on the 6143, I would love to see the grades one through five and then the grades six through 12.
Ed code dictates that elementary is still considered one through six, even though that, that's why you'll see some middle schools that will be only seven, eight, or some junior highs that only be seven, eight.
Okay, so we're bound, we have to keep that then in that.
Yeah, so one through six is man, that's a mandate. That's an ed code issue.
All right. Also, a question about in number, in 6143, they, the history, the development of the history, they talk about all the various groups that should be mentioned. And one of them is Jewish-American. And then you head back to number 6161.1, selection and evaluation of instructional materials, and Jewish-American is left out. And I don't like to have that on.
In 6161.1?
Number nine, they talk about the accurately portraying society's cultural and racial diversity. And I think that it lists the role and contributions of all the groups. And here again, I don't see the Jewish-American in that list.
Can I see yours?
And we can always add to the list?
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that I don't, I mean, it's up there ahead. And I don't know that, was it just an omission or what? It's just, it's on 61.
Yep. And those are referenced in the ed code.
That's ed code, but this one does not mention ed code. And it's just.
Totally. I'm referring to this specific is for the ethnic studies framework that will be expected of us in 25 and 26. But we can add whatever we want to add. So as long as the board provides direction, I can add that to that list to ensure that it's covered within our ethnic studies program.
Which policy?
We're in, it's 6161.1, selection and evaluation of instructional materials. When you go into nine, meeting the requirements of Education Code 6040, which is the specific subject content. And that's where you go into portrayal of. And then to, the subsection two, is where they start to address what is on the forefront, where school districts will have to adopt the ethnic studies program by the 25, 26 school year, which for us as a district, we always knew that we were going to utilize our community-based, you know, we were going to create a committee and it's going to start probably second semester of this year with next year with an adoption and a pilot process with the full adoption by 25. So these are preemptive conversations. But 100%, as long as board direction, we can be able to add that to this policy for approval.
Well, I think, I see what Mrs. Marcus is saying and looking at the, we're looking at 9A2, right? Correct?
Yes, that's actually 9A.
9A. Right. When it refers to the different ethnic groups, it refers to kind of the Americans combined with maybe a country of origin, right? Not a religion. Religion is stated separately in that list. So what I'm wondering is if, if we talk about in there, if there's, what it doesn't talk about, because it does cover African, Latino, Asian, Pacific Islander, European, it actually omits the Middle East and that whole region unless they're counting that as Asian, you know, because sometimes they do. And but it's, it's kind of a very, it's a very, it's a misleading list, I would say.
But just history, though, again, on 6143 course of study, we added Jewish-American to our course during our study session two summers ago in the adoption. You'll see on that form, it is not red or green. It's in our original policy. So we added that.
No, I get that. Is this, is this language in this section 9A ed code language?
Yes, it's green is what the CSBA has created. It's not.
That's CSBA, but it's ed code.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's, it's what.
It's two different things.
No, I'm, yes, it's, it's the ed code around ethnic studies.
Okay.
We can add to the list. The framework allows us to be able to include or add. And that's what we did here on the first one. So we, we did this on the 6143 for the course of study. So if we reference our current 6000s, that's there. They've included, like they switch instead of Mexican-American, they switch to Latino-American. So updated language. So you'll see the green versus the red. However, we did have that in our previous policy. This section, I'm sorry, this second section, what Mrs. Marcus has brought to our attention is basically the introduction of the ethnic studies language from ed code per framework. And we can, we can't subtract from it. We can add to it. That's the difference.
Right. I'm not trying to subtract.
Oh, no, no, I know. I'm just being clear of the green versus the red on the documents.
Yeah, I just, I just think that it's, it's, there's, because when we say, you know, Jewish-American, there's Ashkenazi and there's Sephardic, right? There's, there's, it comes from different countries. So you have, some of those are European-Americans. Some of those, I guess, would be considered Asian-Americans. Is that currently how ed code is qualifying the, like areas like Israel would be under, are they carrying, are they, is that Europe or Asia? I don't know what they're doing these days.
It currently isn't under ed code. We added it to our ed code, so it's not evident in here. Oh, I know.
Geographically.
Yeah.
Would that be considered to cover that region of the world? Is that considered under Asian-American or European-American?
I'd consider it European-American.
Okay.
From my, from world history.
Right. Because, because then you don't have, if you're talking about roles and contributions of groups, you know, they don't have, they don't talk about like Irish, right? That's not here. But is that European-American? Is that, is that what they consider?
It'd be within our European history course.
Because they, they, it's really foggy how they kind of define, you know, we study certain things in history that are pretty clear contributions from a whole slew of groups that migrated to this country. But this doesn't really correctly kind of address that. I don't think this list addressed that. So, but if it's ed code, so be it.
Yeah.
Add that to my, add that to my list.
Dustin.
Ed code complaints.
What's in underline, we added?
On what document?
So in the 20-page, 26-page document, which is 6143, the, the green is newly recommended by CSBA. And as per ed code?
Correct.
It's both.
Yep. So their interpretation and adoption of ed code inserted into their policy, and it's the California School Board Association's recommendations due to adopt. The white portion, the blank, is basically what we had had in previous policies that we adopted in, the last adoption was in, we did this December 6 of 2022. And then since then, we brought two of these adoptions, smaller to you. Now we're making a recommendation of being able to update that to current, whether that be this one, the following, if this is a first reading, the second one. So yes, if that makes sense to you.
So, I'm so sorry. So the, the, the black, which is white, right? That's what you're referring to? That's the original?
Do you have a colored copy in your?
Well, we only have the PDF.
We only have what's online.
I also sent it to you via email.
It's all, it's all coded.
Correct.
It's posted this way.
It does look color-coded here. You know, I might call you to walk through it with you to have it, I'm going to print it out and have a better understanding that way.
Absolutely. Just for, yeah, from a clarification standpoint, red was previously old language. It's, it's read it out and we.
Struck it?
Oh, my gosh. Totally struck it through. And this is the process that we had done in the earlier 6000s with, this is just what I follow. And then green is the new recommend, recommended version. All this is CSBA recommendations. None of this is from Cabinet or BUSD. This is directly from their guide in October of 2023. And then anything that's just old, like still white and unmarked, which is still old language. So when you see a section in red, it's in our current policy. And that's what they're recommending getting rid of and replacing it with the green sections.
So let me ask you a question, just so I can understand. So if you'll go to, for example, 3F on page three. So 3F says, for example, here, the wise use of natural resources. So following that, there's no ed code number, but is this pursuant to ed code?
It's, it's above with three.
Because above of it, above it in three is the ed code.
Correct.
Okay.
And that has always been there?
I just, I want to go back to Mrs. Marcus because I never, I kind of jumped in on her question and I didn't know if you were, if you were done.
Yeah, no, I, I, this is a first reading. And we're only going to make a suggestion of man, Dr. Stern is making some suggestions for this that perhaps you could give it to Dr. Braggie and we, so we could see it ahead of time when we come to discuss the second reading next time.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's just those.
Well, it's just those few things that I mentioned that.
No, I know.
And I'm also wondering if it will be in the 5000s.
If you want them incorporated or not, if that's something you'd like to see added, then we should give maybe.
You would just check in to make sure it was covered somewhere.
Send it out to us and we can look at it if you still want to do that. That's my suggestion.
Right. Am I permitted to send it to all of us? No.
No, you send it.
Yeah, to Michael. Yeah.
Send it to Dr. Braggie.
But I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off. What we can do, though, is if Dr. Braggie were to receive them, say, by Monday, the individual recommendations, I can update the policies and be able to, you know, repost and reshare from that standpoint. That way then also the community sees any recommendations that are being made from a second read.
Okay. So I had, I had one question, if everybody else was, was complete. Policy 6154 homework and makeup work. To me, in reading it, it seems like a free-for-all and that it's going to throw everything back to the individual. I mean, I kind of felt like, why is there even a policy here? That's kind of how I felt. So I'm concerned that we're going to have a lot of inequity and complaints and whatever if we don't figure out a better way to manage this. Even from the fact that, you know, students may use technology to assist with homework and our makeup work and conducting. That's, that's an invitation with AI. To me, that seems like you can have, you know, brainly or AI or whatever, do your homework, you know? And we're actually saying it. So I don't know.
Yeah.
I just think this really needs some, some work to kind of tighten controls and at least protect the quality of students' education and at the same time, protect the teacher's ability to assign work as necessary to complete, you know, their studies in a particular course. I know it's not cookie cutter. There's not a one-size-fits-all solution to this. I'm not looking for that. I'm just wondering that, that this policy doesn't seem to policy anything, I guess would be the way to say it. I don't know how to say it.
Well, and I think by design, I think that we are in a different boat than the majority of other school districts where, not that every school district isn't shooting for educational excellence. I think that as far as resources go, we have a lot more resources compared to some school districts and our students have access to a lot of other things. So I don't think that this policy is written specifically for us. Again, we can always come in closer. Like we already adopted an AI policy and procedure for both 612, right? So if you wanted to see that inserted inside here somewhere, that would be a great addition to this policy to make sure.
I would definitely refer to that in this section that talks about technology, you know, just to know, so people know there is a restraint on this, you know? And then as far as, as homework, you know, either not, a teacher shall assign homework only as necessary to fulfill academic, no, sorry, it was the credit. It was getting credit for, I gotta find that now. I'm sorry. There was something about incomplete homework and students receiving credit. And I apologize, it's not right in front of me right now, but do you know what I'm referring to?
The credit piece, I think, is.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the back half.
The back half. No, that's makeup work.
There are three.
I want to get the right one. I'm sorry, Sophia, what'd you say?
Um, on the key, oh, sorry, on the 3F, it's page one, the green out paragraph under
Yeah, that was not, that was not the one I was thinking about. I'm sorry. I apologize, everybody. I lost the place I had because I'm scrolling. Please bear with me. I want to get this right.
In person, Mark, we actually, in the 61, 6163.4, the student use of technology is where the AI is. And in that same statement, students may use technology to assist as long as it, and then it further goes on specified in board policy 5131.9. And then academic honesty in board policy around student use of technology, which is the 61634. We do have the previous presentation that I did on the AI, the artificial intelligence. That's where that is labeled.
Okay.
But I can also bring it more into here.
If it just references, just reference it. It would be great. I found the paragraph. It's, although on-time completion of homework is important to maintain academic progress, the board recognizes that students learn at different rates. Students shall receive credit for work that is completed late in order to encourage their continued learning. Do all, do all teachers currently subscribe to that system?
But that's where we come into play, is if we are adopting and creating this as our policy, it would then make us rework our procedures and practices within our school sites.
And has that been vetted out with administration and faculty? Have they talked about this? Because you said this came from CSBA, right, these corrections?
Correct.
But to, you know, I, I, you know, this is like getting a medal for participation kind of thing, mentality. And I don't think we can talk about educational excellence if we're, if we're going in this direction.
Noah, can I just ask you, and excuse me, we were going to be talking about grading and homework and we were going to talk about the scaling. This might be a good place where we could discuss that during that, that set. I think we've asked for a study session about grading and so on, and the use of homework as a part of grading. Might be a good thing that we could add to that if that's, I don't know if you understand what I'm trying to say.
I do. I, we can bring that in on that conversation. But as far as policy, I think this is, this is heading in the wrong direction for what we're trying to do. That's, that's my opinion. And I don't know if my colleagues agree with me or not. I don't, I don't think that should be in here. I think that should be taken out.
I agree that all teachers do things differently, though.
Sorry?
I mean, it's very difficult. Every teacher does things differently. And it's our students who suffer because there's no set policy on how it's handled.
It's, students shall. It's, students shall receive credit for work that is completed late in order to encourage their continued learning. I'm not saying students shouldn't, but then that opens the door that people can just turn and lay work, right? And then know they're going to get some credit for it because whether homework counts, and homework is weighed differently in every class anyway. It's not, and I think, I think that may be where the policy needs to come in, is how much homework can weigh on a final grade, you know? We have to talk about that. But for now, I think that this is, this is opening the door for a little bit more of mediocrity, so.
Do you want to, oh, sorry. Do you want to switch it out with students may receive so that it's as a teacher determines?
Instead of shall.
Instead of shall? Because most teachers don't give full credit and sometimes things do happen.
Right. I understand that and then you could be.
I think you're more concerned about what the teachers are really doing and using this policy, right? Isn't that what you're more concerned about, Noah?
No, because I think there is, there's teachers that, that demand the excellence, that demand the work be turned in, that don't give credit, and then this policy would override that, right? If their current practice is not to give credit for late work, then this would override it. So that's, that's my concern that, that it just, it's a deeper conversation and it's really one that has to be vetted with the educators. It's not something that we're going to vet up here. So I just, I don't, I don't believe in that, but I do believe that we should not have policy that hamstrings excellence, you know, that promotes non-excellence. That's, that's, I won't, I wouldn't support that. So for me, I would strike that for now in the first reading and then if there's something that wants to come back and we, we look at a way to rephrase that or something to kind of work with the sites and the teachers and understand the best way to tackle this because I know it's an ongoing issue, right? Homework is a constant debate. This teacher that teaches the same subject doesn't give any homework, you know? This teacher gives a lot of homework. It's very, very, there's no equity in homework in our district and probably there's no equity in homework in the United States of America.
That's first and foremost.
Right? So, and I don't think it's rocket science tree, right? I think, I think homework has to be given as a proper step in that path of, of mastering the curriculum, right? Mastering the subject matter. That's how homework should be designed, that there's some days that it doesn't help to give homework, there's some days that it does help to give homework and it shouldn't be, it should really be subjective to the kind of class you're taking, right? We all know, for instance, studying a foreign language, you absolutely have to have homework. You have to practice a foreign language, right? You know that every day, but it's not necessary. That doesn't apply to every core subject matter, right? So I just think it takes a deeper conversation. Listen, I'm willing, you want to leave it in here for the first reading and, and do it for the first reading and then figure something out for the second reading? That's fine. I'd prefer to take it out right now and figure something out, but the whole, this whole homework issue, I think, needs to be vetted better. And by the way, I don't mind approving it and then pulling it, going back separate and examining it on its own as a policy and really, and really getting into the heart of it. Okay?
Yeah, and I, and again, I want to remind just all of us that there's a much larger problem here in the state, not within our school district. And so this is, these are recommendations from the California School Board Association on meeting needs of all students and trying to raise math and ELA scores for all students. And then we always can bring it down and then however we interpret it from a policy and procedure standpoint, or a procedure and practice standpoint, and the implementation into the Bulldog Guide and then into the Norman Guide is our work. But these, again, all the green is their recommendation based off the full state and not specific to just.
Understood.
Yep.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for indulging my tirade. Okay. If there's nothing else, we can approve the first reading and we'll bring back the second reading with the suggested corrections, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I will take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
I will make a motion to approve the first reading board policy BP 6161.11 supplemental instructional materials.
I'll second that. Any questions, colleagues?
I just have one comment. On the very first paragraph, I liked, the statement is that standards and shall supplement and not supplement and use, the use of board adopted basic extent, I would like to say that that word supplant be replaced with replace. And I have no problem with the rest of it. Okay?
Just out of curiosity, Mrs. Marcus, what is the issue with the word supplant?
I don't think it's as accurate as the fact that it's saying to not replace is a stronger way of putting it so that we understand that we're not supplanting, but that we are not replacing. I just like the wording as a stronger way of putting it.
Okay.
You don't have to accept it if you don't want.
No. Colleagues, any, any objection to that? Okay. You can have your replace. If there's, also, who made the motion on this?
No one.
I did, I made the motion.
Yeah. Are we interested in waiving on this individual policy, waiving the first reading, approve the second reading with the change?
I'm willing to accept that.
It's one policy.
You want me to?
Yeah, rephrase it, please.
I would like to move that we approve the, the, from instead saying first reading, the second reading, including the one change that was made to the supplemental instructional materials.
I'll accept that change. Any other questions on this, colleagues?
I really would like the opportunity to review this in more detail. So is this second reading, does that mean that this is it or is there a third reading?
No, there's only a second. So you do object to going to the second reading?
Yes, I do object.
Okay. Then we'll just, then we'll revert back to the original motion. I apologize, Ms. Kraus Howard, she wants to review it further. So thank you very much. So without any further questions, we're just going to approve the first reading, still with the change to go in with the word replace. Okay?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to 15C. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the 3000 board policies.
I will second it.
And here comes Mr. Guzman. Any questions, colleagues? Okay. Great. Thank you. Hearing no questions, we will take the vote on approving the first reading of 3000s. Thank you. Put a lot of work into getting to this point with the 3000s and soon to be 4000s. So I appreciate the call of my colleagues' extra time that they are putting in to review these massive binders from the underworld. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Guzman. Great job. What?
It's the ledger.
It's the ledger. Okay. Moving on to 16A, approval of the strategic plan update accountability?
I will move for the approval of the 2023-2024 strategic plan update accountability dates, but I believe that we were asked to add some times to that. If you want that in there, I don't know if that would be in there or if that just stays the way it is that we know that, I think the question was asked, what's the time? So from 1:30, I think it was 1:00 to 3:00 on those two dates that were on the, I think it was December, no, January 30th and the other one was November 4th. Is that correct?
It was the 14th, yes.
14.
And it was.
Let me, let me throw, you made the motion, I'll put a second on so we can have the discussion. So I'll second the motion. Thank you. Continue.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that, that the dates, that the times of those two meetings would be included in those dates. So the approval, the, the dates are fine, just note that there are two dates that include times actually, and I don't even know if we need to do that or not.
I think that one of the reasons why I didn't put the times in there is just because sometimes our closed session are approximate times and so, you know, sometimes we start an hour later or earlier, but I didn't want to put the exact time. I thought the dates would be enough. But I will send you, as I did in the, in the responses, the approximate time that we have and we'll follow up with reminders as we go.
Okay.
The goal is being before the board meeting.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Immediately before the board meeting.
Yeah, on, yeah.
Like a study session prior.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to the draft resolution.
I'll make a motion for approval of draft resolution number 2023-2024 against terrorism, Hamas, antisemitism.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. I just want to make sure, Mrs. Wells, that the motion will include, you're going to have to amend the motion if we change the language, okay? So we'll just add friendly amendment of with the additional changes and then before we vote.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Braggie, I think, was going to put the, the resolution up so that way as in real time, as we edit it and complete it, then we can vote on it, complete it.
Nice.
Okay? So we'll give him a moment for that. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in tonight. Okay. All right. You can take a minute.
Will I be able to accept that? Or be on the?
It's going to be up there and if you have it on, if you're logged in.
Different classes.
So the one thing I noticed, there was a note, the resolution in support of Israel. Mrs. Wells, was that your change?
Yes.
I do really appreciate that. I, I would prefer to make a resolution for something than against something. I think the language can reflect the against part, but I think the title of the resolution should be in favor of, right? That's kind of a feeling I have. So I would definitely support saying resolution in support of Israel and leave it at that and then have the language of the resolution cover the statement about being against terrorism and Hamas and antisemitism.
I actually added it as an and, so.
Right. And I'm, I'm.
You're suggesting.
I'm jumping even further on that and I appreciated that. That's, that's, and then, and once again, that's something that we have to come to consensus on. So, so how, are we still waiting?
If Kbev.
I feel like I'm looking at myself.
I've got my screen up if you can possibly.
There we go.
I can't see that.
He's going to enlarge it.
Yep.
Oh, Michelle, there's also the, I made a copy for you.
We have it here, but he's going to make it, he'll have the final version up there. So colleagues, how? Yeah, they were put here.
I did not get a copy. Is there a copy?
It, it got stuck in the logjam.
Michelle, I made a copy.
She's got it.
And just added my suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
But that's just a starting place.
Right.
And they're just suggestions for discussion.
And so the public is aware, there's, there's really no way for the board to work on a resolution together unless we do it here in open. Our colleague had brought a draft to the board and then we decided, let's put it in open and finish it in open. It would be way more on the up and up, as we say. Okay. Does, does, how do people feel about the resolution in support of Israel as the title of the resolution?
Support of Israel and against terrorism and Hamas and antisemitism are just resolution in support of Israel.
That's, that's what I would like. That's my suggestion, a resolution in support of Israel. And the language of the resolution covers the against part. So I just think.
I'm not opposed, but to me, I think tying it to the kids is my number one priority. And so the reason why I would like the antisemitism in the title is because I believe that that's really the core of it, is that we're trying to establish our conduct on our, in our district. And so it's not, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but to me, the real thing is that I want to establish that our kids will know that they will not be subjected to antisemitism or at least that they shouldn't be. So yes, I support Israel and yes, I want to make sure that our kids know that they will be safe from, you know, such actions. So I'm just throwing that out there for your consideration, Noah.
I respect that, Judy. I think what, my only issue is that it makes the resolution title, you know, very long and, and.
So how about?
Brevity is one of the best things and I look in the language, in the first two paragraphs of the language covers everything that you really want to say. So I, that's why I made the suggestion. I think it's well vetted out in, in the beginning language.
I mean, the other way you could do it is do in support of Israel and against antisemitism.
Yeah.
And then have the other, the other two taken out.
I'm good, I'm good with that. That's a good compromise. Does that work? In support of Israel and against antisemitism.
Yeah. Bring it back to the kids.
Great.
Thank you.
Good. See, there it goes, right there. It's happening. Real time. Look at that.
Things we're talking about in the resolution, so.
Okay.
So I'm sorry. So I'll make sure, so in resolution in support.
Of Israel.
And against antisemitism.
And antisemitism.
Okay.
No, so it would be anti antisemitism, so I think against antisemitism is going to.
No, no, I know. Is that me or pro?
Okay. So Mrs. Wells had a next note. I was gonna.
I can take you to my notes if you like. And then, well, go ahead, Noah.
No, I was going to say, I support that next note of intentionally, the word intentionally, but I feel it should be before the word invaded because I think it's both applies to intentionally invaded and viciously attacked, both had intention.
That's good.
Okay? So.
Hamas intentionally.
And Hamas terrorist intentionally invaded Israel and viciously attacked.
I think that's where I had it originally and when I was.
When you wrote it down again?
I wrote it down and.
All right. I'll, I'll give you credit for that.
Yep, I think it's the grammar. Does that look good? Somebody?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Wells, do you want to continue on that paragraph?
Well, on the, at the, on the last sentence, I just replaced kidnapped with took, but I'm not married to it.
How about abducted?
Yeah, abducted. Abducted? That's the word.
Abducted, okay. Everybody okay with that change?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I deleted originating from all parts of the world because I just felt like. I'm not married to it, but this is a suggestion.
I don't think, I don't think it's significant to the message of the, what we're trying to say, but I understand perhaps the original intent in something like that, but I don't, I think the important thing is the abduction.
Yeah, I'm okay to take it out and keep it shorter.
Thank you. Okay. Originating from all parts of the world?
Oh, yeah, that I take out.
Okay. Okay. Second paragraph.
Along the same veins, I deleted and other municipalities and just left it with the.
City of Beverly Hills.
United States and city of Beverly Hills.
That's okay with me, but I just wanted to insert something to make it read well so that it would read, and the city of Beverly Hills has also resolved to do so. Insert a has.
Yeah, because you took out the have, so yeah, it should be has.
So and has.
And the city of Beverly Hills has also resolved to do so, correct? Okay, good. Knocked off two paragraphs, moving on.
Wait, hold on.
Good job, everyone, we are, this is basically English class happening in front of us.
Miss Minnicherry, are you okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Sophia's having a little PTSD here.
I apologize, are we putting an also? So, will it read as it is now, and the city of Beverly Hills has resolved to do so? We can live without the also?
Yeah, we could take out also.
Okay. So, it's good as it is?
Okay.
Thank you.
Then the third paragraph-
Is that gonna end it right there?
City of Beverly Hills has resolved to do so.
Has resolved to do so.
Yes. Then on the third paragraph, I rewrote it, really.
You're doing the third one whereas altogether differently, right?
Yeah, whereas BHUSD recognizes that hate crimes against Jews and, is that open expression?
Yes.
And is that of antisemitism or?
It's hard to read my writing. And open expression of antisemitism-
Of antisemitism, okay.
Have dramatically increased worldwide since Hamas's attack.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'll let Dr. Braggie catch up.
The hate crimes against Jews are an open expression of antisemitism have dramatically increased world-
It would be hate crimes against Jews and open expression.
Of antisemitism.
Have dramatically increased worldwide since Hamas attacked.
Just one thing, um, in the language we're taking out, we, we're using the phrase Jewish people and then replacing it with Jews, is that, do we want to say Jewish people?
I think Jewish people would be good.
Yep, okay.
Thank you. Michael, do you want me to read it out to you?
Thank you, Sophia.
Yes.
So, it would be that hate crimes-
That does have a negative connotation, you're right.
Against Jewish people and open expression of antisemitism have dramatically increased worldwide since Hamas apostrophe attack.
Can I make one suggestion there?
Of course.
Yes.
The hate crimes against Jewish people are an open expression. Crimes against Jewish people are an open expression of antisemitism, are an open expression.
No, was hate crimes and open expression of antisemitism-
I think, yeah, because it's, because I think the point is to show that it's gone up, right?
You can say recognizes a dramatic increase in hate crimes and-
No, no, I, I don't, I liked what you said, I just said the hate crimes against the Jewish people are an open expression of antisemitism and have dramatically increased worldwide since Hamas attacked. No?
No, I like the idea that those are separate ideas.
Sorry, that these are separate ideas, that you were trying to-
I was trying to-
I agree.
It's not the one thing that happened, two things happened here, right, that's what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then this is-
It, it should be open expressions though, right, plural? Instead of, am I right?
That would be okay.
Yeah.
Expressions.
And, and Mrs. Wells, the rest of it's gone then?
Yes.
Yeah, the also's gone. Okay.
Dr. Braggie?
Can you read that one?
Yeah, will you read it? You want me to read it for you?
And I think you need an and at the end.
Where?
Expressions gets an S, the word expression gets an S.
Whereas BHUSD recognizes that hate crimes against Jewish people and open expression of antisemitism have dramatically increased worldwide since Hamas's attack.
And then, and then an and after the semicolon, 'cause then it's gonna be the last whereas?
Right, and.
I'm so sorry, but am, am I incorrect that the semicolon goes after attack? And the and go, will go after the, the semicolon?
Yes, you're right, I think it goes after families, no?
Well, you do not need the semicolon at that point.
There we go.
Yeah, you don't need it at that point, and we don't have and in any of them, so we need, we should add those, that to every paragraph.
No, 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 it's 'cause it's the last whereas gets the and, so it's basically comma, 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 and.
So, after families, it will be a period.
Right, the comma after, right there, is there a comma?
Yes, you're right.
So, semicolon to comma?
Worldwide.
Yes.
Comma, worldwide.
I guess that's resolution speak. What else?
Then whereas, so that paragraph is fine, right?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that paragraph. Okay. I'm, I mean, unless people have notes, we, we can just quickly go through, uh-
I have one last note on four.
So, typically in our resolutions, we've had and in each of them, I know that, that, I mean, just the formatting has been that way, but-
That's okay with me.
Okay, then we can stay consistent then. Branding. And, and away, Dr. Braggie. It's great watching a former math teacher do English.
That's right.
You have-
That's true.
Okay, so now, down at the, the resolve part, um, can we go through, anybody have any changes on one?
No.
Two? Three? Four, I have something, I think both Mary and I have something.
I added racism after against.
I, I like that.
And I deleted what you put in parentheses, actually.
Including.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, well, I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I wanted to-
Did I wait, no?
I just wanted to bring it up and take it out.
No, I didn't delete that, actually, I left that in, so did you want to delete?
I want to delete that part.
Okay.
It's convoluted, it, it waters down the message of the other part of this resolution, and plus, it is something that we don't educate our kids about, so it's inconsistent and incongruent with what we do. So, we do-
We don't educate our kids about eradicating groups and-
Well, I think the word is genocide, if you, if you, if we wanted to include this concept, we could use the word genocide to make it fast, shorter, but the question is, do we want it to read as follows? BHUSD commits to educating our students to take a stand against racism, hate, and antisemitism, comma, including genocide, or should we just leave it at antisemitism?
I would leave it at antisemitism, which is-
Yeah.
Number five, which I think is addressing-
That's right.
Okay.
In a broader way.
So, thank you.
Michael, does that make sense? So, forward, you got it?
Yep.
Educating students to take a stand against racism, hate, and antisemitism, good, yeah, that's correct, and the last one, I don't have an issue with, so.
I think I added-
Okay. Anybody on number five?
Do we need to say with dignity, do we, does Beverly Hills Unified School District claim that all people are born free and equal, entitled to human rights without distinction of any kind?
I'm okay to take out with dignity.
Yeah.
Do you want to take it out?
We can take it out.
I like your suggestion, Rochelle.
Thank you, Rochelle.
I do too, I thought it read, there was something awkward about it, I was trying to fix.
And that was it?
I couldn't figure out how to fix, I had added actually more to it, like dignity, tolerance, blah, 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 but this, I think, reads better the way Rochelle said.
Streamlines it?
Of course, the real caveat in the whole planet is the definition of human rights, right?
I know.
That becomes the topic of discussion. Okay, so, wonderful work, everybody, that was actually much quicker than I intended, and I appreciate it. So, with that in mind, Mrs. Wells, can you, do you accept these changes as a friendly amendment?
I do.
And who had the second on this, Ms. Carlshower?
Uh, Dr. Stern.
Dr. Stern, do you agree?
I'm still grappling with the idea of taking out, eradicating group of people. Genocide, there's actually, I mean, there's a, depending on which sector you talk about or is using it, genocide does have its own definition, so I don't know what would be most appropriate, but there is, there is something further going on here that does involve antisemitism for sure, but the larger war here and the terrorism, um, in, in some ways, is involving targeting a certain group, so I don't know if I, if I am comfortable to completely get rid of that, whether we say genocide-
Can we just add genocide to the list to take a stand against racism, hate, genocide, and antisemitism, or somewhere in there, if that's what-
Yeah, we could do that, I mean, I just don't know if we're using genocide in the appropriate or the fully sound way, but yes.
Because you have to, here's-
I don't think it belongs in that sentence.
Well, that's why I had taken it out in the first place, but you have to remember, Dr. Stern, that in that particular point in the resolution, you're saying commits to educating our students to take a stand against racism, hate, and antisemitism.
But we also take a stand against genocide.
Understood.
We teach, we teach about genocides in history, we don't teach people to take a stand against them, we don't actually do that.
But I do think that-
No, 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 no.
Genocide in this context is covered by racism and antisemitism.
Yes, I, I agree, I agree.
I agree, yeah.
No, I don't think so, because genocide actually means killing a, a specific gene-
Large amount of people.
Gene pool of people, so antisemitism is the sentiment behind it, but to actually go forward and make intentional plans to kill any group based on their lineage or their heritage is another matter, and-
It's not, it's not the idea of being against it or not, once again, I refer back to the idea of committing to educating our students, that's the part you have to be careful about, because there's only certain things that we educate our students about, right? We do teach them about genocide, but we don't teach them to take a stand against it, not that we support it, no.
Our meaning of genocide, we don't take a stand.
No, when you, I will, I will open up any history book and show you, there's plenty of genocide in the studies that we teach our kids, we don't instruct our kids to take a stand against it, they get there on their own, but I don't think it's specifically part, hold on a second, it's not part of the curriculum, and I would ask Mr. Seaman to come up and address that if he can. Is, you cannot answer that question.
My, my bigger issue is that on this-
Where is a history teacher when we need one?
One here, I just don't think it, it's, this is the spot for it, I think, I'm not opposed to talking about genocide.
Right.
I see what you want, but I think the idea here is that when you're taking, to educate the kids to take a stand against the racism, hate, and, and you're throwing in genocide, I think you're throwing in a totally different, uh, decision there.
And, and also, number one, under this resolution, unequivocally condemns Hamas terrorists inhumane attack on innocent civilians and does not condone terrorism nor crimes against humanity.
That covers it.
That covers it.
Right.
Where, what do you mean, ed code says it?
2226.3, civil rights, human rights violations, genocide, slavery, and the Holocaust are addressed under-
Right, we, yeah.
There we go.
I said, we teach it, so- But we don't teach it to take a stand, that's not, that's not our job, that's not what public schools do. So, I think it's, I think it's covered, I think it's covered, Manny.
Okay, I, I don't see the harm in saying that we teach them to take a stand, because I don't think anyone sitting here would agree that for a group to be targeted based on their genealogy or their lineage would ever be something that we, that we don't, I mean, if we're saying, we don't, you know, we're against bullying, we're against all these things, we're certainly against that, but, I mean, I was the one who inserted crimes against humanity, so I suppose we could just sit with that, but make no mistake-
You could say crimes against humanity, including genocide.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody? Crimes against humanity, including genocide, under number one. Can we add that, will that, is that sufficient, Dr. Stern?
So, but this is how it reads, and-
It would work.
Tell me if it, I don't know, let's see, BHUSD unequivocally condemns Hamas-
Terrorists.
Hamas terrorists, inhumane attack on innocent civilians, and does not condone terrorism, comma, crimes against humanity, nor genocide.
Good.
Done.
I would also move the word inhumane before the word terrorists.
Okay.
It'll be Hamas's inhumane terrorist attack. It doesn't make sen, no?
I don't know that it's here.
It doesn't make sense to say Hamas's terrorist inhumane attack.
No, no, I mean the genocide, I mean the genocide.
I'm just talking about throwing in the-
What, the genocide one?
I think, um, I would prefer, I just don't think that's where-
Are you referring to the including genocide, Mary?
Yes, I'm just, I'm thinking while I'm thinking about that.
I mean, genocide is a crime against humanity.
Right.
It's like on a syntax level, Noah, I know. She's not sure, but separately, Noah, to your point, if we move terrorists, so it would be Hamas, Hamas apostrophe inhumane terrorist attack.
Yeah, you're describing the attack.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Great.
Okay.
And also, if I may-
Inhumane terrorist attack on, in, in innocent civilians, and does not condone terrorism nor crimes against humanity.
Including genocide. Okay, Michael, one thing is, I'm seeing some items are in italics.
Yeah.
But you might want to do a control all and take out all the italics. Unless there's a consistent approach to it.
No, I don't think we have italics.
Do you want, do you want a comma after humanity?
Comma, including genocide, you can, you can do it, yeah.
That's fine.
Sophia says yes. Comma stays.
Oxford comma, guys, and mandatory.
Okay, now. Mrs. Wells, do you accept the friendly amendments?
Yes, I do.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wonderful. The resolution is adopted, thank you, Dr. Braggie, this resolution will be available in its final form on the minutes of this meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues, okay, moving on to meeting reports. Uh, which end did I start, I'll start back down at that end, Ms. Lifson, anything else?
All good, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
I'm thinking of what's not been reported on. I attended the CBLC meeting on October 19th, where we reviewed different expenses around the bond, and I think that the CBLC was very satisfied with the answers provided, and we talked about the different savings that Von der Solari has found in, in their budgeting process, and they started to talk about the upcoming audit and preparing for when they would do their next report. I attended, um, sorry, bear with me, Mahjong, the PTA did Mahjong for the high school, which was a great event, BHEF Poker Night, as Dr. Braggie said, I would say, actually, all of these events, it was actually really nice, given all the events that have happened with regard to Israel, and, and it seemed very difficult, actually, to go to these different things, but it was actually, it was nice to have our community, and it actually, from that to the, the Harvest Festival for Hawthorne, it truly was a joyful event, and it was really great to see the kids out and running around and playing, and it was just, it was just like tonight, having the kids here, it really provides a nice balance, I think, for what everybody has been experiencing, we're so inundated with everything that we see on, you know, the news and social media, and I know that I myself, I just, I can't even really wrap my head around what we've seen and what we continue to learn about in terms of Hamas attack on Israel, and I would say, even now more so than ever, I unequivocally stand with Israel and its right to defend herself against terrorists and to protect it, protect its country and its civilians, and I, I also really strongly believe that Israel shouldn't be held to double standards against what, what actions they're taking as opposed to other nations in protecting their citizens and their right to protect their citizens, and I'm really proud of our district and as well for our city to really take a stand and to support Israel, and we are seeing of late, even more so than ever, as we've said in the resolution, such a dramatic increase with antisemitism, I think we've been talking about it for the last couple of years and seeing the rise of antisemitism, and really talking about how important it is for us to speak out and really stand against it, but it really is now more than ever, I, I was thinking today, just, I, I think it was last year when Ken Burns documentary came out on the Holocaust, and how for me, just sitting and watching that, and the images from the documentary, really seeing that, in that documentary format, was really for me shocking and overwhelming to really watch that last year, I think, I'm pretty certain that it was last year, if not, it was two years ago, but it was really devastating, and I remember watching that and, and really seeing those images and thinking, how, how did that happen? How could that have happened? And I really, and of late, with all the events that we're seeing and the rise of antisemitism, and it's really shocking, and it's, it really is true, it's now more than ever, that now, never again is now, and I really feel strongly about that, so I'm really happy for us as a district to take this stand, and I thank the parents that spoke tonight and spoke out against their, and alerted us to their experience or their child's experience in school, I think it's a reminder that we need to be very aware and very sensitive to what's I think it's a reminder that we need to be very aware and very sensitive to what's going on and really educating ourselves about what is antisemitism? What does that look like? And what that meaning is behind that? And especially in our community, because everybody is really hurting and, and everybody's really afraid. And I think the world has really changed in, in so many ways for all of us. So, I just think we should be, have empathy. We should be bringing each other in, not dividing ourselves, because we are a strong community. And I think it's about communication and really building understanding and, and joining together to fight against, really, the evils in the world.
Thank you. I also attended the 5K, which was amazing. And I thank Mr. Ellis for his efforts and his team's efforts to bring it in and have it be something that BHUSD handles. I think it's a heavy lift. And moving from the Roxbury Park scenario to BV was, I think it made, it, it was poetry that, you know, that's where our community came back to, because that's where that family started in BHUSD. I also attended the BHEF Poker Night. And actually, one of the poker hosts was here. And I thank them so much. It was not, when I was leaving my house, I was really tired, as Noah, you said, exhausted from all the events and overwhelming information. But when I got there, I was really happy. It was beautiful. I loved seeing so much admin, you know, being part of the community, being with the families, playing poker. It was gorgeous. And BHEF did an amazing job. And as for the Fall Festival at Hawthorne, just when I think that Mrs. Kaber and her PTA team knock something out of the park, the park just gets bigger. It was amazing, and I'm really thankful for it. I do want to speak about the resolution that we just passed. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for being steadfast colleagues and, you know, determined to make it happen. I try not to talk about my kids specifically, but I think this one warrants sharing. I have my five-year-old chicken nugget. And on the day of jihad, things were really intense for the parents. And that's really what woke me up to realize that that sense of unsafety is, is real, you know? I picked my daughter up from school. She did go that day. But she said to me, mommy, there was only seven other kids in my class. And so, we joined with the other class. And it ended up that the teachers made it a great, fun day for them, and I'm grateful for that. But she asked me, where were my, my other friends? And she's five, and so unfortunately, I lied to her, you know? And I said, I think maybe they, they got sick and they stayed home so they don't get anybody else sick. And I looked through the rearview, and she's got her big eyes, and she was not buying it, you know? She wasn't buying it, and she's only five. And it broke my heart for all the other parents. And I spoke with so many parents in those 24 hours leading up to that day. And I have one friend who is so mellow and strong. And she was having stomach aches from growing up in Iran. And the same stomach ache that she had on her way to school, where she knew she would be treated with antisemitism from the principal who taught English class on Mondays, you know, it was starting to eat her up. And I had another friend who, to me, is my fiercest favorite friend. And she has been waking up in the middle of the night and bringing her little girl over to her bed to be able to sleep, you know, after knowing what's happening in Israel. And then a mom, who I've never met before, and she's French, called me at 7:20 on that Friday morning to ask me what I'm doing with my kids because she was so unsure about what she's going to do with her kids. And she was having flashbacks of growing up with antisemitism in France and Belgium, which is another level. And so, these are the things that our families have been grappling with. And I just acknowledge this board, and I'm grateful to be part of it, you know? So that this resolution is telling our families, your kids are safe. We value all our kids, their safety, their emotional well-being. That's it, full stop.
Thank you, Judy. Dr. Stern?
Yes, and I wanted to thank Judy, who essentially pioneered this and put this forth to us a couple of days ago. And you were open to our suggestions. It was funny, at one point, the cursor was going, and it said Judy, and then there, I was right there, and I want to say hi. But it definitely needed to be done and penned, and I'm, I'm very proud of that. So, I wrote something that just sort of sums up kind of what's going on, or in my opinion. But I said, this terrifying time is, of course, very sad and uncertain. I have no illusions that our students aren't hearing and witnessing the horror. I hope that our students learn that there will be no peace as long as we live alongside those who revel and rejoice, even broadcast their savagery. And there is a difference between collateral damage, such as the unintended killing of innocent civilians versus intentional killing of civilians, including one's own innocent civilians, all for the purposes of increasing the carnage and maximizing the horror. This will be a long, dark period in history. There will likely be an increase in hate crimes, as we've known all around, and kids might experience more despair. So, I did enlist Ms. Starkins and.
Could you ask Kev to switch the screen at us?
Kev, could you switch the screen, please? Just a reminder, everyone, that there is a way to report hate crimes. And you can also go to Normanade, you can post anonymously, anything. And for safety's concerns, you can anonymously report anything on Titan. Right here, we have some QR codes. And where else can these be found? On the Beverly Hills website, or if they go to the Normanade site?
Back of their ID card.
Oh, back of their ID card. So, students, please be advised that we're here for you and that there, you know, we are experiencing more distress and fear and hate crimes. And there are resources for you to turn to, and we encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I want to just say it's great to be back in person and not watching this on the screen at home. Unfortunately, during that time, that I was unable to attend many of the events that you people talked about tonight. And I felt sort of left out because of homecoming and poker night, all of the things that I probably would have been right there with you all. I could not be at, and it was not very pleasant to be sitting at home. I did finally get a chance to get to the math night at the Horseman, along with the unveiling of the new mural that they did, which was adorable. And as I said, it was fun to watch the kids point which one that they had done and, and saw their faces of such pride in what they had done. I spent a few minutes at the Fall Festival at Hawthorne, and it really looked like they were having a magnificent, wonderful time. And it was really a show of unity of the, of the community at that point. I'm glad, and I just want to applaud Judy and, and Mary. I'm not sure who actually, I think it was Mary and Judy that, working on this wonderful resolution that we just passed. It shows that we can work together and really come up with something that's really definitive in, in how we would treat this. And I'm very proud of the resolution that we just passed. I think it was really wonderful. And, and talking about antisemitism, you know, you can't pick up the paper in the morning without seeing something that's happened. And just this morning, I happened to open the paper, and there were two articles. One about a home in the valley that carries an American flag that, it's a Jewish home because it had the mezuzah on the door, a very large mezuzah, that they had started and burned the American flag and done some damage at the house in, in, in the valley. I think it went West Hills. And the other was that in Orange County, at a school, the kids had painted swastikas on the lockers in the school. And it was, it just, here we are talking about hatred and antisemitism, and we're being surrounded by it, and it's increasing every day. So, I'm glad that we have taken such a complete stand on it. I would like to make a little comment about noticing our kids and their fear of what's going on. You know, my grand, my son came to the house at, because I, he helps me in the morning when I, and he came to the school later than usual on the Fri, on the day that all this has been going on. I said, what took you so long? He says, well, my, your, my daughter made me drop her off in front of school today because she was afraid. Because normally, he would drop them off about, about half of, where they would cross the street and walk. He wouldn't, she wouldn't let him do it that day. And he actually had to drive around the school and get in the line to drop her off at the school. And when she had to leave or the whatever, there was an appointment or something, I remember she said to me, she had to be escorted out of the school. She wouldn't leave the school unless she was escorted out to the car. So, she was, she's very, this is an eighth, seventh grader, fearful at this point. And, you know, I didn't know anything about it, except that my son told me about it. So, it really struck home for me. And as we talk about safety and, and safety and kids keeping safe, I hope and pray that the parents are taking good care of what they're going to do on Halloween, because that's a very big concern. And I know that the kids had a, at Beverly Vista, they had during the last week at that Bulldog Day Two, they got a lesson from the police department on safety. And I thought that that was something was very apropos for the upcoming, the 30th or 31st of the month. And I think that it's just, I just hope that we can, and as I say, just a wonderful feeling to work on the board. And thank you for your treatment, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bregge, any other comments? Okay, thank you. I echo many sentiments, and I won't repeat them from my colleagues tonight about the current situation of the planet. I do want to, on behalf of the board, wish our Assistant Soup Matt Horvath a happy birthday. But then, to record, I want to welcome our BHGA President, Elena Castan. Thank you for joining us, as always. Thank Kev for their work tonight and over the last study sessions that we've been having about policy. We all, something I didn't even expect when I got to Hawthorne for the Fall Harvest was the new turf. That was wonderful to see that. So, thank you for, for that happening. It just kind of happened. A lot of parents and students had attended a first half of our meeting tonight. So, thank, thank them for coming. It's wonderful to have students here, especially the little ones. It's always a joy to see them. I want to wish, once again, as I do once a year, next Friday is my identical twin's birthday. So, I want to wish my identical twin a happy birthday next Friday. Also, I was given a book. Anything that happens in the world is always a learning opportunity for us. And I hope that teachers are using this, especially in the high school level, as a learning opportunity, especially when you've had students that have studied the Holocaust and studied genocide and studied, have seen Schindler's List, have, knows what happened or about 9/11, and starts questioning, you know, what's going on? Really, what's going on with things? Somebody turned on, turned me on to a book called Israel, A Simple Guide to the Most Misunderstood Country on Earth. It's by an author who is also an actress and a writer and a producer named Noah Tishby. I recommend that book. And I recommend anybody who wants to get an understanding. It's very easy to follow social media at a time like this, listen to the news. But this is an opportunity for people to really dive into the subject matter to get a better understanding. Because we kind of, we kind of think we have an understanding of things that go on in the world, but we really have only seen bullet points. And this is extremely complicated, what's happening in the world right now. That is why it's so difficult. That is why all the decisions Israel is making are very difficult. And we should understand what's going on. So, I, as a school district, I encourage people to educate yourself. It's very important, especially in this time. Future meetings on the 14th of November and December 4th. And with that, I will say thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Meeting is adjourned.